Hello and welcome to Ward Talk, CTN's look at the political scene in Ann Arbor. I'm your host, Bonnie Gabowitz. We'll be discussing issues and solutions with the city council members from our five wards each month. Joining us this month is Jen Iyer from Ward Four. Welcome, Jen.
Thank you. I'm so happy to be here.
Yes, and this is your third visit, but your first in-person visit because before we were doing it electronically.
We were doing the Zooms.
Right.
So I'm really glad to be here in person.
Right, and it's a nice cozy situation.
Yeah.
So let's start, first of all, talking about your ward, Ward Four. And are there any updates you have on what's going on with your ward?
Sure, I've got a few. So for those watching and who may not know where Ward Four is, we are southwest Ann Arbor. And we've had the pleasure of having a major road reconstruction project through our ward on Siobhan Church Road this past summer. This was a project that was a long time coming. In fact, it was even delayed a year because of construction costs, but we were able...
Didn't some of the projects already be done in sections? Because I recall work has been ongoing for several years now.
That's true. So Siobhan Church from South Main to South Seventh Street was done a few years ago. And now, this year, we did Siobhan Church from South Seventh all the way down to Maple. And the whole thing has been resurfaced, repainted. We have new bike lanes. We've even got a new crosswalk that goes, you know, sort of midway through that point because we've got a lot of kids that are going back and forth to go to school.
Right, there are school areas.
Yes, absolutely. So that project is just about done. Right now, they are just putting in a sidewalk along the school property that runs along there. And it's great because we've never had a sidewalk on that portion before. And so that's going to be really nice for kids who are traveling to school and just anyone who's out and about.
And I understand that's a pretty main thoroughfare. Siobhan Church Road is parallel to other very busy streets.
It really is, yes.
It's not just for the neighbors that use that road.
No, no, that road is a major artery. So it's really good. You know, one of the things that we were concerned about when we were looking at resurfacing it is just the speed on Siobhan Church because people do tend to speed quite a bit. It's a very long, straight road, and that creates the perfect condition for people to speed. And yet, all the potholes, we thought, you know, might have been slowing people down. So we were, it was a little, it was a little like, okay, we want to resurface this road, obviously, but we don't also want to make it an Autobahn. And so...
So you actually made it easier to go faster because the roads were better.
So that's why we included some design features to also, you know, make the lanes a little narrower. When lanes are more narrow and you have the painted, even the painted bike lanes, it does tend to slow down traffic because people feel a little more constricted. And also, that midway intersection or crosswalk, I think, will help to slow down traffic as well.
Any other areas, is there any new development that's in progress?
So we do have two other, well, we have many other road construction projects coming that are exciting. I'll name a few. Greenview Road, which is a very long time coming. I lived on that street for 12 years myself, and it had never been resurfaced. So very exciting to have that done. We are actually going to be narrowing the street and bringing the curbs in to, in order to slow down traffic there. So that is something that residents expressed that they really wanted. It's actually really wide for a neighborhood street, and so we're going to narrow it to the width of a normal neighborhood street.
Does it already have a bike lane?
No, but, and we're not going to put a specific bike lane in. So with some of these projects, there's another one in the Lawton neighborhood as well, South Seventh over to Lawton School. Same thing there. It was excessively wide for a neighborhood street. And there were some folks who really wanted to put in some extensive bike lane infrastructure because they don't feel safe driving there because people go so fast. And there were others, of course, who didn't want any changes at all, except the resurfacing. And when we really looked at the data, the speed counts and the traffic counts, we found that what was really needed was to just narrow the road, to make it a regular neighborhood road where bikes and cars can share the road because traffic is going slow enough.
So your decisions were based on research and facts?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep. There's another project over off Packer that I'm really excited about for next year. This is Page Avenue resurfacing. And that also is a long time coming. It's one that we were able to do because we are increasing our road funding by selling municipal bonds. So we are generating money for additional road projects beyond what we have been able to do in the past.
So is that in process right now? Are you still...
So we, council approved it. So we, and this is something that I talked about when I was running for office, actually, was issuing bonds in order to get some extra money to fix our roads. And because we have such a great bond rating, it just makes sense. And so that is exactly what we're doing. And there are several roads within Ward Four that are going to be fixed much sooner than they otherwise would be because of those bonds that we're issuing.
But that's not in the present, right now, it's in the near future?
Yeah, 2024 through 2027. Those things will happen. Page is 2024. And then, along with that, we are going to put sidewalks in. Page has no sidewalks. And it's a major thoroughfare through that entire neighborhood where, you know, a lot of, again, kids are using that pathway to go to school, just people out walking, and not having a sidewalk at all on either side was not safe.
And we have very active neighborhoods where many of our neighbors are just out and they're walking or they're, you know, they're just being outside, playing ball, whatever. But we do have very active streets.
We do, we do. And so we've got to make our streets safe for everybody.
Right, okay. So anything else for the ward before we touch upon all of Ann Arbor?
There's more that I could talk about, but that's okay. We can move on.
Okay, we have a few things to talk about that some are ongoing updates. Last month, I had just talked, touched upon the rent situation, the fact that there's a lot of comment now in the news and on the neighborhood chat boxes that, you know, the concern about the rent going so high, so excessively high, that it's affecting people's ability to stay in their homes, and it could actually increase the homeless population and cause a lot of distress, not only for the adults, but the children and their schooling. And the fact that Michigan, the state, does not have a rent control program. So I'm wondering if you could fill us in on, number one, what can the city be doing now to address these issues? And how can the city, moving onward, connect with the state and help initiate some change?
Yes. So it's important, whenever I start talking about this issue, the issue of housing costs and our current housing crisis, to understand how we got here. And the short answer is supply and demand. So for the past two decades, we have added about 40,000 new jobs and students to the area, to U of M and to the employers, the private employers around the area, 40,000. And we've only added about 7,000 new beds. So even when people look around and they see we've had a lot of development happen in our downtown core, that's almost entirely been geared towards students. And even that hasn't been enough to keep up with the growth in the number of students at the university.
And I believe the university is looking at new buildings and to create more housing for their campus.
They are, finally. But it's not enough. And so we have seen the private market step in and try to fill that. Now, if those towers, as some people call them, hadn't gone up in the campus area, in the downtown area, we would have seen even more of our family, single-family homes in the outlying neighborhoods be converted to rentals. So that has met some of the demand, but not nearly enough. We are still tens of thousands of housing units short of where we need to be just to be in equilibrium, supply and demand. So that, of course, has caused housing costs to rise, to the point where we have a near-zero vacancy rate in our rental market, which allows landlords to keep raising prices up and up and up. And of course, on the home sales side, we see frequently bidding wars and cash buys and people who try to find a place to live here and just can't.
It's a much bigger challenge if you can't come up with the cash.
Yes, right, right. You get outbid. And so this is, this whole issue is going to take a multi-pronged approach to fix, and it's going to take a long time because it took us a long time to get here. So there are no easy fixes. But what we need to do is a number of things. One, we do need to allow for new development, new housing development to occur throughout the city. We have focused on our transportation corridors because those are areas where it is cheaper to build. So, you know, if you have an apartment building that you're going to build on, say, Stadium or Eisenhower versus downtown, it's going to cost a lot less to build it, and therefore it's going to cost less to rent it.
All right. But is that just something you're anticipating, but you don't know for sure?
So we have changed zoning rules in order to allow that to happen. It wasn't previously allowed. And so we are creating specific new zoning to allow for dense housing to be developed along our transportation corridors. So that's one approach. Another is affordable housing, is funding affordable housing ourselves. And so we are currently working on that, on building affordable, truly affordable housing on some city-owned sites in the city.
And what's the timeframe for that?
So we are getting started on some of those projects. The Y Lot is one of the most visible and well-known. But those are, those are ongoing. And we are actually looking to accelerate what we're able to do there by bonding, again, using those bonds, to bond against our affordable housing millage so that we can make use of that money much faster and build housing much quicker. And then, some of the other things that we need to do is look at state policies, as you mentioned, and how can we work to, with our partners in the legislature in order to maybe change some policies that will allow us to help keep the cost of housing down here in Ann Arbor. And I serve as the chair of the Council Policy Committee. This is the committee that comes up with our agenda that we want to push at the state and federal levels, things that we need in order to achieve our goals here at home. And I was just in Lansing last week, actually, talking about a multitude of issues, including rent control. And it's got a lot of support at the state level now with our Democratic legislature.
Okay. Well, when we continue after our break, we're going to be talking about the whole city. We'll move on from your ward to the whole city, okay? We want to hear from you, so please email us questions to ctn@atugov.org or tweet us at hashtag CTN in Arbor. We're going to take a break now, and we'll be coming back with more from Ward Talk.
Since October 2015, Ann Arbor Inclusive has been produced by CTN and the Ann Arbor Commission on Disability Issues. The show has featured numerous guests, with or without disabilities, to discuss issues such as health, politics, and wellness. Thank you, CTN, for your service in providing Ann Arbor residents with the wonderful opportunity to create television programs. Congratulations to CTN on its 50th year anniversary.
Welcome back to Ward Talk. I'm your host, Bonnie Gabowitz, and I'm with Jen Iyer from Ward Four, and we're continuing our discussion about Ann Arbor. So you wanted to mention something else about housing. We didn't quite finish our chat.
Right.
So what did you want to tell us?
So one of the things that we sometimes don't think about when we think of housing costs are the rules and regulations that the city has in order to get a development through the process that can really add time and a lot of cost to a project and therefore make it less affordable for the people who eventually end up either buying or renting in that housing project. So one of the things that I initiated recently was a top-to-bottom review of our building and development processes to look at all the different ways that maybe we have too many steps or our steps take too long and they're really adding to the time and the expense.
So you wanted to simplify some of the things that they have to do?
Yes.
The keeping everything the same with what the safety issues are, et cetera?
Absolutely.
But just make it a simpler process?
Just looking for, so most people who develop in Ann Arbor develop elsewhere as well, right? And so we're, we actually did a whole interview panel of various types of people who touch the building and development process. So everything from real estate professionals to developers, to the trades, to contractors, to residents who may be having some work done on their own homes. And what we've asked everybody is, where are the pain points in the process? And what held things up for you? And how are things different here than you might be experiencing in a different municipality?
You know, how long ago was...
The work started earlier this year, and we expect to get a report back by the end of the year with a slew of recommendations, things that we need to change, simplify, maybe shore up in some cases. But overall, the effect should be to reduce the time and expense. And we're doing this in advance of some of these changes that we're making to the zoning, like the TC-1 zoning. We just made that change. But if we start to get a lot, see a lot of people wanting to develop, we need to make sure that the process is in place to allow things to go smoothly. And right now, it's not even that smooth. And so, you know, we want to get that done before maybe we see an influx of development.
Do you have, this, I don't know if you can answer this, is there any way the city can limit the amount of expensive multi-housing that they have? Is there any control over that, since that seems to be what's happening over the past several years, is all the new construction is expensive housing?
It is expensive. It's expensive because it's expensive to build, and it's expensive because land costs, particularly downtown, where most of that new development has happened, are really high. There is nothing that we can do to regulate the cost of, you know, what someone charges to rent or buy private housing. The only things that we can do are make conditions such that we're not adding a lot of expense to the process and also create conditions where more of it can be built so that the supply isn't so constricted. Again, it really gets back to that supply and demand. That's why housing in the city costs so much because there is just not enough of it for all the people who want to live here.
Okay. And let's, just one minor thing I want to mention, we have a park that has been renamed. Southeast Area Park is now called Bicentennial Park. So tell us why, what the meaning is behind that, since not everybody knows about bicentennial.
Sure. Well, we are coming up on our bicentennial next year, and it's very exciting. We are planning a lot of different celebrations, and one of the ways that we are going to be marking this is by having a park renamed, Bicentennial Park. That park will be receiving some new amenities. And Splash Pad is in the works for that. We did receive a grant from the state to help us get started on building a Splash Pad. We chose that area because it is an area of the city that has more of our lower-income neighborhoods, and we wanted to make sure, from an equity standpoint, that we were focusing some attention there. And that, that area has some community centers nearby and daycares, and we just think it's going to be just a really positive addition to that park and for the community who lives around there.
And I understand there's an invitation to design a new flag?
Correct.
Is that going on now?
It is ongoing. So if you have, if anyone has artistic tendencies, it would be great to give it a whirl.
And they can find information on your website, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And we, there's something new about our studio here at CTN and having a new facility that involves also an election center. So tell us about that.
Yes. So this is really something that we absolutely need before the 2024 presidential election. Currently, we have just a patchwork of facilities and strategies for conducting our elections. We always conduct them with the utmost integrity. We have the Clerk, who's, you know, consistently named Clerk of the Year, and she's currently the head of the Michigan Clerks Association.
And the office right now is downtown, right?
Yes, and her Clerk's office is downtown. She'll keep her Clerk's office downtown. But as far as where elections are run from, we see a need with the increase in absentee, no reason absentee voting and early voting. There are a lot of ballots now that have been cast and need to be stored until Election Day, when they can be counted.
Right, they're not processed at all until Election Day.
Correct. And so it takes a lot of secure storage space to make that happen. And we've been, like I said, putting together sort of a patchwork, and some years it's over here and some years it's over there. And then when they do the counting, they need a very large space to do that. We're having to move election equipment around, sensitive election equipment that really should stay in one place.
So you're talking about security, too?
So it's security, exactly. And very importantly for me was learning that we store our election equipment right now in a private facility, privately owned facility, which is fine, it's secure, but it would be more secure if we were storing it in our own publicly-owned, secure operation. And just with the amount of election interference that folks are attempting to do in the state and across the country, we see just a huge need to consolidate all of that into our own facility and keep it secure and, and...
Right. And this also will afford the TV studio to have, is it a bigger facility for their needs as well?
Yes, absolutely. So the election center will serve both the elections and CTN in a new renovated facility. So it should be an upgrade for you.
Yeah, and I believe it's on Miller Ave?
Yes.
Yeah. So this has already been purchased?
We are in the due diligence phase right now, so it should go through if everything goes well. We did also, council authorized the funding for it, but when I was in Lansing last week, we, one of our asks of state legislators was some funding to help us with the cost of building that election center.
Okay. So we'll be looking in the news to see what's happening with that. Great. The police chief position, let's just talk about that for a few minutes. Has the police chief already left office? And you're now looking for a full replacement?
Correct.
Do you have an interim person right now?
We do have an interim right now. Deputy Police Chief Amy Metzer has been our interim police chief for the past several months. Our former police chief, Chief Cox, took a job as the police commissioner in Boston.
Isn't that where he came from?
It's where he came from, but he was at a lower level, and then he came here for a little while, and then he went to Boston now, serving as the top dog there. And so that's great for him. And Chief, interim Chief Metzer has been doing a great job for us. And we did do an extensive search for a new police chief that resulted in four candidates who were interviewed, and ultimately, none of them rose to the top in terms of all the evaluations.
And I believe you televised those interviews, now that I remember.
We did.
So the citizens could actually watch?
We did, yep.
Them being interviewed.
Correct.
So are you using the same company to do the research for the next round of possibilities?
We are, as far as I know, we are. And I believe we have some new candidates that we will be interviewing soon.
So is there a certain number that you want to have before you start the process again, as to the number of candidates?
Number of candidates? We have no set number. I, I like to have at least three, just personally, when I'm hiring, because you really get a chance to weigh people against other candidates, against, you know, each other, and it gives you a better perspective, so.
And in the couple of minutes we have left, you are involved in other work for the city because you're on some committees. So tell us about, anything you want to tell us about all these other parts of the work that you do.
Absolutely. So I mentioned a little bit about the Policy Agenda Committee. So that's one of the things we've already talked about. One of the other committees I serve on is the Admin Committee. So this is the committee of a small number of council members who work with the city attorney and the city administrator on some high-level issues, so...
Could you give an example of a high-level issue?
Yeah, so one of, one of the things that we had been talking a lot about was the role of work sessions in the work that we do. In the past, city council had work sessions regularly scheduled, and oftentimes, they were helpful, but sometimes, they were just, let's come up with a topic just because we have to have a work session. And then, so when our new administrator took over, he wanted to just take a pause from that and see what sort of things might bubble up. And so we did go without work sessions for a little while, and now we're starting to see requests for, we'd like a work session on this topic, or we'd like a work session on that topic.
So it's more focused and more time-efficient?
Correct, correct. And so we do have some coming up. And we've got one coming up on the Public Power Study, and we've got one coming up on Housing and Homelessness. So those are examples of issues that, like you said, are much more focused. We've decided there's a need. And so as part of what the Admin Committee has done is develop a process for how do we determine whether something meets the threshold of needing a work session.
Well, Jen Iyer, it's been a pleasure speaking with you and helping us understand some of the complexities of the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Remember to join us for a new episode every month. We want to hear from you, so please email us at ctn@atugov.org. Attention, Ward Talk. You can also follow CTN and ask questions on Twitter at twitter.com/CTNinArbor. We'll make sure to include your questions. To watch this and all of CTN's program, head online to youtube.com/CTNinArbor. For Ward Talk, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz. Until next month. Until next month.